Yeah, how many pounds of of pressure does Gavel would stand here?
I don't know.
All right, we're gonna find out. Let me know when. You call this means a lot of the time is six oh one. I'd like to ask, Commissioner, what do you if you could please lead us me?
Yeah, wait. By hand over your heart, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Public, which is the best, one nation under God. In this world with every team and justice for all.
So much. All right, Director, can we have a roll call, please?
Hey, Commissioner Arvizo, absent. Commissioner Morio.
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Present.
Alternate Commissioner Fonseca.
Present.
Vice Chair Hernandez.
Present.
Chair Gonzalez is absent.
Awesome. At this time, we'd like to ask for the approval of the agenda. At this time, the Commission may announce any items being pulled from the agenda or continue to another date or request the moving of any item of the agenda. Can you get a motion for approval of the agenda, please?
I I motion to approve the agenda.
I second that.
You need a roll call?
Hey, Commissioner Morio.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Yes.
Alternate Commissioner Fonseca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hernandez.
Yes, sir. Moving on to the approval of the minutes, can we get a motion to approve the minutes for item number one, planning commission meeting minutes for June twenty first on twenty twenty three? And item number two, planning commission study session minutes for the same date. Can we get a motion for that, please?
Motion to approve the meeting minutes to have a June twenty first twenty twenty three meeting. I second that.
You need a roll call?
Hey, Commissioner Morio.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Yes.
Alternate Commissioner Fonseca.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Hernandez.
Yes, sir. Mister Director, are there any written communications?
Just real quick, I just heard the motion just for June twenty first, the meeting minutes, or that?
And the study.
And it was.
Well, do we do? Do you want us to vote separately?
Yeah, yeah, let's just do it for the study session, because I didn't hear that in the motion.
So we did first for the meeting minutes, yeah. And then.
Let's get a roll call for the second item, for the second item.
For the study session as well.
Can we get a motion for the uh for the second item?
I motion to approve the planning commission study session minutes from June twenty first twenty twenty three. I second that.
Roll call, Mister Director, please.
Commissioner Morio.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Yes.
Alternate Commissioner Fonseca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hernandez.
Yes, sir. Moving on to written communications, Mister Director, are there any written communications?
Uh, no from staff or that we received?
All right, moving on, the public comments, has has anybody submitted any requests for public comments?
None, none other other than items that are on the agenda.
All right, perfect. Okay, should we open and close about comments at this time?
No comments online.
Moving on to reports and requests for non-hearing items. Uh, item number three, uh, citywide wireless telecommunications facilities compliance update.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the Planning Commission, Anaí Fernández, Management Analyst for the Development Services Department, and I'll be presenting on this item.
Thank you.
Okay, so this item is our citywide wireless telecommunications facilities compliance update. As some of you may recall, on March fifteenth, the Planning Commission received a status report of the approved wireless telecommunications facilities in the city. Eight out of those eleven facilities were observed to be out of compliance with their CUP conditions of approval due to general maintenance issues, unmaintained landscaping, the deterioration of some of the facilities, and their inability to mitigate their visual effects. Um, the Planning Commission expressed at that meeting that they would like to see the sites in compliance within ninety days. Okay, so the first site is our tower on Avenue fifty two. Uh, for this site, many of you may remember that uh they had items outside of the facility causing a possible fire hazard. Those items needed to be removed from the site, which they have, as you'll see on the picture to the right. Uh, so this site is consistent with the conditions of approval for the CUP, and it is well maintained. This one is in compliance. The next site is the tower on Avenue fifty. The site here is also consistent with the conditions of approval for the CUP, and it is in compliance as it was back in March as well. This next site is a tower on Oats Lane. Previously mentioned in March, debris, amounts of dirt were blocking the driveway, and there was need for general maintenance. Condition fifteen of CUP one eighty four did require landscaping to be planted around the parameter of the lease. Low, no landscape, no landscaping has been observed. Um, so we did meet with the provider at the side of this facility um and gave him a rundown of what needed to be completed at the site. Uh, they said they were gonna complete the maintenance um and anything else that was needed. They did provide, uh, they did suggest synthetic IV to the front of the facility compound. But we did mention to them that the landscaping needed to be done around the parameter of the lease. No work has been done to this day. Uh, we did mention to them that we wanna see progress, at least cleaning up the outside of the facility. So this one still remains the same. It's not in compliance. Our next site is a tower on Dylan Road. This one, you'll see that the landscaping has been trimmed. The picture to the right uh displays this. Condition twelve of the CUP did require an appropriate view of scurrying landscape in conjunction with the chailing fence to establish a living fence. The living fence has not been established or uh placed at the site. But they did provide samples of synthetic IV for the possibility of establishing a living fence in the future, which they're gonna be adding to their plans and send to the Development Services Department for review. Um, and they did mention that there is homelessness um in the area, so the synthetic fence may cause them to come to the site and use it as a compound for them to kind of like live in the site. Um, so we did mention that they would have to have additional security measures at the site, and that would be their responsibility. So the site is still not in compliance. The next site is the Monopalm on Harrison Street behind the O'Reilly's. This one needed, um, the synthetic palm materials needed to be maintained, and it needed general maintenance. No work has been done at the site either. They did mention that they um are obtaining bids in order to complete the the maintenance work. This one's still not in compliance. The next site is the Monopalm on Harrison Street. This one is the one behind the Food for Less. Uh, for this site, the two palm trees were required to be planted adjacent to the Monopalm Tower. As you can see at the uh to the picture on the right, the palm trees have been planted. And uh there is operable, you know, operable irrigation system at the site as well, but it does need maintenance. I believe when they were um when they were adding the irrigation system, they didn't in place the pipes right, so that needs to be fixed. We did inform the provider of this, and uh it because of that, it's still not in compliance. So the next site is a Monopalm on Duma Street. This one is in Bagduma Park. I require the two palm trees to be placed at the site. The palm trees are were not observed. They did mention that they're gonna be speaking to the construction team of where the palm trees need to be placed. Once they do that, they'll um put the site out for bids to obtain a team that can do the work at the site. They said this would take about three to five weeks to complete, and this was about last week or two weeks ago that I spoke to them. The next site is the Mono Eucalyptus on Duma Street. This one's also in Bagduma Park. The site previously had an existing irrigation leak and broken synthetic tree fronts. The irrigation leak has been replaced and the synthetic fronts have been maintained. This one's now in compliance. The next site is the Monopalm on Jackson Square next to the neighborhood Walmart. Uh, the palm trees for this one were observed compared to previously in March. Um, they have now been added. Construction is still not in conformance with the plan submitted and the conditions imposed, specifically not complying with the sizing of the synthetic palm fronts. It has not been finalized with the Development Services Department. It's still not in compliance. Uh, you'll see that to the picture to the right and the left, uh, they have made changes to the coloring of the of the tower. Uh, the one to the left in March, they had a lighter green, and they changed it to a darker green to match the neighboring Monopalm. The next site is on Jackson Square. It is also a Monopalm. And the day palm trees were also required to be pl- planted adjacent to the tower. Uh, only one of them was observed. The second one needs to be replaced. So for this one, we talked to the provider, and they mentioned that they're um, they put it out for bids in order to complete the work as well. This one, I believe they said it would take two to three weeks to complete. The last one is the tower on Avenue fifty two. This one is in compliance as it was back in March. It looks well. Uh, so this one, as mentioned, is is in compliance. So staff has been working with the providers to get the facilities back in compliance. Uh, we believe if we give them a few more weeks to do the work, they'll be able to complete it. Uh, but you know, planning commission also has the option of revoking any CUPs for the facilities that are not in compliance as well. And any questions, I'm.
All yours.
For the need.
I have questions.
Questions, go ahead.
I have a question for you for the synthetic IV. Was that a suggestion from staff, or is it something that the provider suggested?
So are you referring to the one on Dylan, um, two of them proposed?
On one ninety two and two forty, I believe, were the two that you mentioned.
Okay. So one ninety two, that one is the one on Dylan. That one, it was a requirement part of the conditions of approval for the CUP. The other one on Oats Lane, it wasn't part of the conditions that they had to submit a landscaping plan around the parameter, but they suggested the synthetic IV since it would be an easier route for them to take. But we mentioned to them that we needed the landscaping around the parameter, since that's part of the conditions.
Understood, and and then the other thing I wanted to ask, and there's a couple of things like you for two ninety two and for three seventeen, you indicated for CP, excuse me, two ninety two and three seventeen, you indicated that for two ninety two, it's about three to five weeks to bring him up into compliance, right? And then for three seventeen, you said about two to three weeks, because there was.
Yes, so two ninety two, they need to speak to their construction team to confirm where the palm trees need to be planted. Um, so that's gonna take about two to five weeks, because then they need to submit the bids in order to do the work. Um, three seventeen, they already know where the palm trees uh need to go, so that would take a little less, two to three weeks to be completed, yeah.
Okay, and then, so just another question. So I understand that there's so there, are they like working with the staff? Are they open to it, and they understand that they wanna be a good business partner as well?
Yes, so I've been in contact with some of them. Some of them have been calling me for, you know, uh, to to provide any questions or for clarifications. So they are actively working on it. I have followed up with the ones that are taking a little longer, just to let them know, hey, like, we're taking this back to planning commission soon. We wanna see some progress. Uh, but they are very responsive, and for the most part, they're um actively working on this, yes.
Thank you for that. That's good to hear. Um, any questions?
So, so go ahead.
No, go ahead, please.
All right, so for for me was, the question was, are 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 any of them as open for communication? Because I feel like site three and site four, and I should have done the numbers, so I apologize. Um, th- they were very vague, so are those two people of contacts maybe not as receptive? Because it seems that the other ones kind of moved on, plantaron, you know, they did their thing, and I kind of feel like three and site three and four were like, oh, okay, we'll move on, right?
Yes.
Is that, again, I wanna know your recommendation. Is that your feeling that they're just taking your call first and foremost, but not really following through?
Three.
What 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 are your feelings about two and three? I mean, three, three and four, sorry.
Three and four, we did meet with them in person at the site. Um, so they are very responsive to our concerns. Um, it seems like they're having a little bit of a hardship because of the landscaping that's required around the parameter. But they are very responsive. Um, and four, uh, this one's gonna, this one's almost completed as well. They've already trimmed the landscaping on the outside. And they just need to establish the living fence, which they've already sent us um some samples of what they're gonna be including. So they'll be sending us an email with the plans for the landscaping for approval.
Sure. Commissioner Morio.
I do have a question. Um, if any CUP would be to be revoked, what happens to that Monopalm or to that site? Does it go to someone else that would bid for it, or do they have a chance to regain it?
So I believe that they would have to remove the site. That's correct, April?
Yeah, they would have to remove it. They could reapply again for the conditional use permit, but then that's obviously another process, and they're starting from scratch. Uh, so our our intent would be to get to the point where they don't have to revoke, right? Because then essentially that could be a disruption of service, and no one wants to have that happen, right? But but at this point, it looks like there's been a lot of work done by a lot of the operators to get into the compliance. I don't think anyone wants to be revoked. Um, but, you know, coming to the planning commission, the planning commission setting a high standard, I think, uh, makes a big difference for them to wanna get to comply.
Okay, thank you.
And this.
Questions from the Commission?
Yeah, I have one more. As far as CPU, it sounds like different CPUs have different guidelines for what is needed for that site. Is there a standard, like you know, objective standards, you know, or design standards for these Monopals and these future towers? Like, do we have something in place? Because it sounds like they can do synthetic IV, but they cannot, you know, what is it like? Can you help me?
Right, so as of now, um, it depends on the site, but we are, as staff, we are working on the standard conditions for each uh site in the future. We'll be bringing that back in September for review as well.
Thank you for that.
Yes.
Are any other questions from the?
So for me, for me, that the the last question is is really the recommendation that I think we should, at one point, do we send a letter with an ultimate final date? Um, that they should know that item like this can uh need to be completed. Do you think that's something possible on to kind of a?
It wasn't ninety days ago.
Huh?
It was ninety.
Nine days ago, so, yes, so. So do we wanna, you know, think about that?
Well, a lot of them say it's it's up to like five weeks, one of them, right? So giving them extension from like six to eight weeks should give them enough time to.
Yes, so if we give them, give them about a few weeks more, I believe, uh, the majority of them will meet compliance. The only one that I am worried about is site five. Um, when I contact them, they, there's no direct person who I can talk to. It's like a one eight hundred number, and they don't give me a direct contact person that I can talk to directly. Um, so I I have contacted them a few times because I haven't seen the progress. They said that they're gonna make it a priority, as we did mention that their CUP may be revoked. No change is done. Um, from the last time that we spoke, they said they were gonna make it a priority. This was about two weeks ago that I gave them a call and said, hey, no work has been done. We're taking this to planning commission very soon.
So, so for clarification, when 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 us as a commission extended the ninety days, were were there something in writing that they received? Do we have a uh an address where that we can send something?
Oh.
And any of that sent to them? How was the ultimatum or the ninety days, I should say, excuse me, communicated? Just via phone? There was no written communication?
Um, I sent some of the notices via email and mail, yes. But it's it's since the ownership does change from time to time, it's very hard to just send, you know, mail. So sometimes a phone call is needed, an email, any other modes of communication are needed, because the ownership does change through time.
Can I ask a question? For CPU two forty for this in particular, that you are concerned about, who is the operator?
Crown Castle. Yeah, so it was Royal Street Communications. Now it's Crown Castle.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Commission?
That's all.
Uh, a few questions here. Uh, there are seven total C uh CUPs that are non-compliant. And how many total are those seven? How many are working towards a resolution or solution here?
All of them.
Oh, well, well. They have something in motion, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, oh, that's, how many have something in motion versus how many are stagnant of those seven?
What what do you mean?
So which which ones might be a challenge? So if we come back in September, it may still be out of compliance.
So this one's the one that I'm only worried about, just.
Five.
Number five, yes.
So we'll call number five, that would be the exception, right? But for the rest, I think we could extend extend the courtesy to get them to compliance and I'm probably another, what, month, you think? Is that, is that fair? I think six weeks.
Yeah. Yeah, because one of them has two, three, five, six.
I think we'll save five, that's in the middle. So we'll go on five weeks. Um. Or whatever we decide. So five, five weeks, right? To do something. Uh, as far as number five is concerned, number five is a if we um the only thing that I that I would I would hesitate on, seeing that they've been a little hesitant to work is allowing them to move forward, allowing them the additional five weeks. That we've been, we've been courteous, right? And if 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 they haven't extended the same courtesy to us, then we have to do what we have to do. As far as uh site number nine, I have a question in regards to that that site. And in terms of how is it being serviced? And I see that overhead line there. That overhead line is it's supposed to be a temporary service. Um, that cell site's been there quite a long time. And usually temporary services are like two years, like you would allow an overhead service drop like that. And that 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 service, that that particular site is in an underground area. So that's the only way I can kind of bring it up, because it's right there in Albertson's area or the old Walmart, or the Walmart shopping center. And that service is an overhead service, and if you look at where it comes from, it comes from around the building from around the building where the transformer is located all the way and like spans like a few hundred feet. So that's my only concern with that. Yeah, I'm wondering if we can if they plan on being there for for, you know, a long call, might as well go and go ahead and install the infrastructure. You know, as a permanent structure, right? Because they're definitely there. They've been there since twenty eighteen, so they're permanently there. Um, then they need to convert their their infrastructure to a permanent infrastructure versus that overhead temporary service.
I think they're on temporary power because we haven't finalized their their project yet.
That was a construction performance issue, right?
We could check.
Yes.
So they're on temp power. Um they've been very late to get a final, so they still have some remaining. We're not gonna give them a final until they take care of all their issues there.
So can we include that final in five weeks? Yeah, I think it's enough, enough's enough since twenty eighteen, working. It's like, let's go.
This one's been dragging on, yeah.
Yeah.
Just um some comments on maybe that that one that Ana you mentioned was out of compliance. I think our communications to them have been pretty cordial and and more like we we would like for you to get a compliance for starting this process of getting everyone there. Um so maybe now is just more of the 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 serious letter that, you know, this could lead to revocation. I would just say we first go there before we say, hey, you're gonna be revoked.
All right, so like, what can we get? Issue that correspondence tomorrow?
Yeah, we can do that if that's what you'd like.
Yeah. So, all right. Anybody have any other comments, questions, concerns for Miss Fernandez and the Director?
I think we solved those. Yeah, we're good.
Well, thank you so much. Appreciate your presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving over to item number four, public training calendar, quasi judicial. General Plan Amendment number twenty three dash zero two, zero three, and environmental assessment number twenty three dash zero three, general plan, end of project. Do I gotta read?
No.
Okay, perfect. Mister Director, go ahead.
Thank you, Comis- uh Vice Chair and Commissioners. Uh, this item, you might recall, was first presented to the planning commission at the last meeting. Uh, this involves general plan amendment. And just some quick background, we, the general plan established the general plan land use for areas within the city boundary, but also in the planning area that may be outside the planning, I'm sorry, outside the city boundary where the city may grow into in the future. Um, and so uh, the state does require us to have a general plan. Uh, this map shows uh relocations in the general plan that weren't identified with a particular land use. Uh, so all those three locations are outside of the city boundary and outside of an existing sphere of influence for the city. And the sphere of influence is an area that uh the local agency permission commission I talked about last time determines where the city could potentially grow into. Um, and so those could potentially be you know, a sphere of influence for the city if if we chose to do that. Uh, so what we decided to do was uh create the land uses for those three uh sites. And so this is what it would look like to have land uses. Now, the criteria for doing this was to make it simple, to be consistent with our general plan environment impact report uh for the for the general plan and make sure that it was no more significant than what was already evaluated at that time. Um, so we looked at the general plan land use for the county. Uh, and so we looked for land uses in the city general plan that would be consistent. And so that's what you see here. Uh, we did look up the zip zip codes, uh, you know, uh, a few minutes ago. And we did determine that, uh, you know, most of those areas are still included in a zip code for we call it Cattell's zip code ninety two, three, six. Uh, so that includes the P seven area, but it also includes the area. Uh, so that includes the P seven area, but it also includes the area to the north, uh, which was north of our city boundaries. Uh, there is a different zip code, uh, which is the thermal zip code, uh, to the s- south uh, planning area, that's ninety-two, seven, four. So P seven, this would be the ninety-two, already has the ninety-two, three, six, um, zip code. So anyone in those addresses there, um, actually have a Coachella address. So this is the area bounded by Jackson on the west, uh, Calhoun on the east, on the South Avenue fifty-two. And so we looked at the underlying general plan land use for the county and the closest, um, land use that we thought would work here is estate rental. We would be creating a new general plan land use so that we can have uh, a density range that's consistent with, with the county of one to two point two dwelling units per acre. So this would be more for like ag and large estate lots. Uh, the corner would be suburban retail, um, which is consistent with the county. Um, designates that corner for commercial uses. That's where the porcelain, uh, business is located. And this just describes what we're doing. So the state rental designation would be applied in the suburban retail land designation. So the consistent zoning with that would be the residential estate zone. Um, and for the suburban retail site, the consistent zone would be general commercial. Uh, for the northern area, I just, uh, I didn't have this for the planning commission last time, but so you can get an idea what it looks like. Uh, underneath that land use, a lot of it is undeveloped, uh, some of it is farmed, some of it is that bird tech, um, uh, weight site in, into the north, uh, you have a lot of areas that are undeveloped. So the proposed land use would be designation agricultural rancher, which is already in our general plan. And the consistent, uh, densities would be between, um, point zero two five dwelling units per acre or one unit per parcel. And the location where Burt Tech is located would be considered public facilities. And again, this just kind of repeats that, so, um, the consistent zoning for agricultural rental is actually agricultural reserve, which allows a similar density. So the southern planning area, which is, um, between, um, Avenue sixty and sixty-two. Uh, this area wasn't designated either in the general plan, and so we looked at the underlying land use. A lot of it is agriculture. Uh, but some of this area close to Avenue sixty-two is the location of the East Valley uh, Community College, uh, campus. And so the, in the county, there is a specific plan in that area. It's called the panorama specific plan. And so what the city would do would acknowledge that county specific plan in the future. If we were to ever grow into that area, we would, uh, develop according to what was approved in that specific plan. Uh, the other areas outside of there would be agricultural rancher. You can see there was already farming that was going on in order to allow for that low density, um, uh, residences that could, could locate out there. So again, agricultural ranchers, similar to the northern area, and the consistent zoning would be agricultural reserve zoning. Uh, one other thing that we mentioned last time that was a reason for the continuance is that there's a policy in the general plan that, that kind of limits when the ci- city can pursue annexations. Um, and so we thought it would be appropriate to address it at this time. Uh, one, it, it says that, um, annexations, that city would allow the annexation of new lands when at least sixty percent of the land within the city limits is built with urban uses or permanently preserved open space. So, uh, there are already other policies in the general plan that I described in the staff report that, um, that are policies that, that require the city to plan for orderly growth. Um, you know, in the sphere of influence or in its planning area, so we feel that's sufficient. And removing that policy would, uh, not impact the environmental determination that we're making for this action before the planning commission and city council. So we recommend deletion of that policy. Uh, so as far as the environment's review, there was an addendum that was prepared to the general plan EIR. Uh, usually that's prepared when, uh, it's determined that, that there's been no substantial changes to, um, since, uh, the general plan, uh, EIR was adopted, so there's no new significant environmental effects, um, of these general plan land use changes. No substantial changes have occurred, um, in the circumstances under which the project's being undertaken. And then last, there is no new information of substantial importance that was not known at the time of the two thousand fifteen program EIR when that was certified. Uh, before I go into the recommendation, I do wanna mention that we did receive the communication uh, from, um, person, his name is Trudy Deertrack. And she was, uh, I did talk to her on the phone. She said she was, uh, representing the Oswald Police and Trust. And so they had some comments that, uh, were questioning, um, the analysis and the sequel addenda uh, that they felt were, uh, so deficient. Uh, we did receive this late in the day, uh, or just before five o'clock. Uh, so we haven't had a chance to thoroughly review this, but, um, staff was satisfied with the addendum that was prepared and, um, the city attorney's office also reviewed it as well. Um, so there was some comments in here that we felt that, uh, that this should be reviewed by LAFCO. Uh, we had to contact the LAFCO that we were uh, pursuing this action, right? And so LAFCO will see, you know, any kind of requests in the future that come from the city. And they would wanna make sure that we, they actually have been requesting that the city pursue these land use changes. Um, and so that's why we're, we're here before the planning commission and city council. Now, they further, further mentioned that they thought that we hadn't fully addressed, um, our climate action plan in the addenda and how this might differ from the policies and effect, uh, for those areas that are in the county riverside. Uh, and so that was mentioned as well in the letter. Now, uh, staff is comfortable with the addendum as presented to the planning commission. Um, if there are any adjustments that would need to be, uh, made, um, as identified in this letter, then, um, those could be pursued for the city council action. But I, I do kind of wanna also defer to Abe, um, legal counsel, just to mention if he has any other recommendations with your action tonight.
Yeah, so, uh, vice chairman and this, and, uh, fellow commissioners. So as Gabriel noted, we received this court, the city clerk received these comments, uh, a little bit, I think, around five o'clock this evening. Uh, so they are still being reviewed, uh, but in, with respect to our preliminary analysis of this. Uh, the action before the planning commission tonight is not approval of the general plan land use designations, nor would it authorize any site-specific uses or development of any kind. Uh, instead, what the commission is being asked to do is to make a narrow, uh, take a narrower action of recommending that the city council consider approval of the application of the general plan land use designations. And so as reflected in the staff report, the city's own land use designation would mirror, uh, those that already exist into the county's general plan such that there is no potentially significant environmental impacts resulting from the designations. Uh, that conclusion is supported by the city's addendum analysis, which was prepared by the city's expert CQ consultant. The planning commission's recommendation, whatever that might be, would still need to be agendized and considered by the city council prior to any general plan, you know, land use designation being applied to that area. Uh, and so nonetheless, prior to any city council action, city staff will work to further evaluate Miss Deertrack's comments and to confirm that the sequel addendum does not require any further clarifications or expansions. Uh, and I would also note that Sequel als- also expressly authorizes a recommending body such as the commission to make a recommendation based upon a draft sequel analysis. And the city staff has found nothing in the comments submitted to the city that would suggest there are environmental impacts that were not already accounted for in the addendum. Nonetheless, we look forward to considering these comments and any other comments the city might receive as this moves towards the city council. Uh, but if the city planning commission wishes to make a recommendation this evening, uh, we believe that everything is in order for the commission to do so.
So the recommendation slide is before you, and to adopt two different resolutions. One is adopting the addendum. That's before you, or actually, uh, recommending that the city council adopt the addendum. And then also adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash seventeen, recommending to city council approval of the general plan amendment uh, twenty-three dash zero two. That's the end of my staff report and happy to answer any questions that we have.
Awesome. Any questions and comments?
I have a remark.
Alright.
Gabriel and staff, thank you so much for preparing this report. Um, I appreciate the foresight, you know, in preparing, um, the general plan with these land uses and making the maps consistent. Because I, I experienced the P seven, you know, meeting, and so it was really nice to see how things are coming together and how we were prepared as a city for this opportunity to bid with LAFCO. So I really appreciate that, so thank you for that. And for bringing this up, so just more of a thank you. And I appreciate your, the hard work that was put into this.
Thank you. Yeah, comments, questions for the director?
For, for the land that this, uh, this person emailed, i- is it, is it the, the the land again next to the cemetery?
Um, so there, I mean, basically in the letter, it's just, it doesn't identify.
Doesn't even specify where the land is, right? I was, I was reading and I was like, where is the land at? So I think it was just kind of a last minute thing. The, the other thing too that I have questions, when you say college of the desert, is it the, the, what's already the portable slash, I think, half building that is already, i- is that the area that is designated? And then, and thinking of expansion, is, is that, is that was already?
Yes, so it's in that planning area for, for the city, but it's not in our sphere of influence. So, you know, if, if we adopted the land uses.
It's gonna be grandfather.
We could potentially bring it into our sphere of influence. There's no intent right now to bring that into our sphere of influence. That would be further out if we decided to do that.
Those are my two questions.
Yeah, just foresight.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Commissioner, what do you? Any comments, questions?
Um.
Also, I have no comments neither director. At this time, does anybody wanna recommend a motion to adopt any of the resolutions? Start with the first one.
Yeah, on motion to adopt resolution number PC twenty thirty-three dash eighteen, adopting an addendum to the Coachella general plan, updates environmental impact report, EIR, finding and determining that additional environmental review and not, uh, is not re- re- request, required uh, pursuant to CEQA guidelines, section one five one six two N.
Real quick, I just wanna make the clarification, cause I have an error in there, that you're recommending adoption and not your, not adopted tonight.
Okay, recommend, yes.
Council.
Okay, cool. Alright, can we get a second on that one?
Second.
We get a roll call. Director.
Okay, Commissioner Muriel?
Yes.
Commissioner, alternate commissioner Ponceca?
Yes.
Commissioner, uh, Ramírez?
Yes.
And vice chair Hernandez?
Yes, sir.
And that's one of them, right?
Yeah, that is one of them.
Okay.
Second, when anybody want to adopt resolution number PC two zero two three dash seventeen?
I motion to adopt resolution number PC twenty twenty-three dash seventeen, recommending approval of the general plan amendment number twenty-three dash zero two, approving text modifications to chapter four, land use and community character element, and a change to figure four dash twenty-three of the general plan twenty thirty-five, land use and community character element entitled general plan designation map.
Awesome, can I get a second?
Second.
Got a second from Commissioner Ramirez. Can we get a roll call, director?
Okay, Commissioner Muriel?
Yes.
Alternate commissioner Ponceca?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramírez?
Yes.
And vice chair Hernandez?
Yes, sir.
Much passes.
Alright. Moving on over to our fifth item. The updates, Mr. Director.
Um, not much update, just wanted to know that, um, you know, our well wishes from staff are with, um, Chair Gonzalez, um, and so, you know, he, um, recently had a, a health, um, issue that he had to resolve, and so that's why he can be with us today. But he is recovering very quickly and, and is, um, um, is doing well, so we expect him to come back to planning commission very soon again. So it's just not soon this morning.
Yeah, arts and prayers are with the chair. Also too, before we adjourn, I like to, um, acknowledge a death in my family, my aunt, um, who's a resident, a lifelong resident of Coachella, passed away today. Uh, she was succumbed to cancer. Um, so we do this in honor of her today, and I love her dearly. It was Alejandro Alvarado. Uh, she was resident at Coachella, lived off Nap- Napoli Lane in Barrio Nuevo. Alright.
To hear that. Commissioner, I was just gonna mention, just, uh, we, we will not be having any scheduled planning commission meetings in August. Just, uh, I might have mentioned that before, but just wanna make sure everyone's aware.
Okay, the following one will be the.
In September. Well, we look forward to hearing from Ms. Fernandez and her success.
Do, do we have, we got one more this month, right?
On the link.
Seventy-five weeks, right? Getting that next year from her, it's gonna be, yeah, five weeks, five weeks is on August.
Be more than five.
Yeah, so we will.
I think it's September sixth would be the first meeting.
So no pressure. You know, best of luck. I like the journalist meeting at six forty-three.